Welcome you to the May first city council meeting. If we could all stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could get our roll call.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Engel.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hagan.
Here.
And Mayor Ballinger.
Here.
All right, up first is the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or a member of the public for special consideration. With that in mind, is there anything here at the council level that we would like to pull from that? Hearing none, is there anybody out in the public that had any items on the consent calendar they wanted to discuss? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, name? Here is five two zero. Uh, moving up to staff communications. S J cog citizens advisory committee quarterly reports.
Thank you, mayor, uh, that was included in your, uh, package. And so if you have any questions, our representative is in the audience. Um, and then if there's no questions on that, we'll go one by one with department heads on updates.
I didn't have any questions, anybody else? Nope, we'll go ahead and go around and.
Director?
No update from the finance department.
Chief?
Yes, I got a couple of updates, uh, mayor, council members. Um, I just want to say that on May third, we'll have our newest full-time officer. Uh, he's already at reserve with us. He's going to transition from reserve to full-time officer. He's going to replace, um, James Murray, who went to the Oakdale Police Department. So, um, he's excited, we're excited. Um, he's, uh, he's doing really good in the program right now and he's got about another, probably another four, six weeks before he finishes the program. And he goes on his own, um, so we're happy to have him. Uh, I want to give you update on the data from the, uh, trailers that was parked over on Debra Circle. Um, a little bit over two weeks, I think it was parked over there. There was, uh, for eastbound traffic, there's about one thousand two, uh, two hundred thirty vehicles that was registered traveling through there. Uh, thirty-three percent, uh, there was thirty-three speeders, that's about roughly about two point seven percent of the vehicles that traveled there. Um, for the high speed going eastbound was forty-two miles. And the average speed of the vehicles going through there was fifteen miles per hour.
It was what again, sorry?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yeah, one five. Uh, for west, westbound traffic, we had about roughly about sixteen hundred vehicles traveling westbound. Um, there was about forty-eight speeders. The average, uh, that averaged to two point nine percent. Uh, the highest speed seventy-nine miles. I think somebody was playing with the radar. Uh, it does capture the time when this happened, so it was roughly around one o'clock in the morning. So it must've been some, some kids playing with the radar trailer to see how fast it could get it to, to go up. Um, we did send the information to the engineer, to the engineer, and his recommendation that no changes, just provide extra enforcement on the neighborhood.
What was the, uh, westbound average?
Westbound average was, um, oh, fourteen miles an hour.
Oh, fourteen, so about the same.
About the same, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, now we need the radar trailer to.
Uh, attending a Escalon city council meeting.
Hi, if you're on the go-to meeting, could you please unmute your mic?
It's great for us all. And it's great for us all, but it's in a location people don't like.
Excuse me, whoever's on the go-to meeting, you're live on the mic, do you mute yourself, please?
Here we go.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, please.
Hey, chief?
Yes, sir.
When you're not saying like two point seven percent, two point nine percent, is that consistent with like typical speeders? Like, do we have like a reference point for that?
A reference point?
Pretty, pretty normal, or is that?
That's really low.
Low?
Actually, yeah, yeah. That's, it's extremely low for, for that area, so.
Gotcha.
Uh, we have moved the radar trailer to First Street and Wendellin for eastbound traffic. We'll, we'll set it there for about two weeks or so, and then we'll change it to westbound to capture, uh, the other side of the traffic coming through. Um, and the last thing I have is, uh, we're in process, in the process of installing those, uh, LPRs, the license place readers. I'll give you an update when we have a final date when they're going to be deployed. And that's it.
Locations are we installing those LPRs?
Excuse me?
What locations are we?
The first five LPRs are going to be at the main entrance of the, the city. One twenty and Brennan, one twenty and Campbell, um, Escalon Baloda at Levy, McHenry at Jones, and Santa Fe at Vine.
Awesome.
Thanks, chief.
Superintendent Collins?
Yeah, I would like to, uh, give an update on, uh, Caltrans and Caltrans. Questions had come through and last week, uh, Mayor Ballinger, city manager Romo and I were able to meet with Caltrans. Um, the deputy director, our vendor there, very nice guy, was very willing to listen to our, uh, concerns, was very responsive, got back to us. Some of the things that we did go over with him was, and that he shared with us was, of course, we brought up the light at Brennan and one twenty. There's not a lot of an update there, the Caltrans also wants that light at Brennan and one twenty, it's just a matter of working through certain things to be able to get that and the funding, uh, but in the meantime, they are in the spring of twenty twenty-five going to be installing some flashing beacons in the area of Brennan and one twenty to help, hopefully help with that situation in the meantime. Um, we did bring up, uh, site issues on the sycamore trees around the first and second street and down by Autumn Grove, um, heading out of town. So they were going to look into that, see if maybe there was something they could do with the trees, maybe remove some on the corner or not, or if they don't feel like anything needs to be done or not. Uh, they repaired a life forest that had fell down in the storm in front of Rite Aid, they got over fairly quick and got that taken care of, um, for us as well. When it comes as far as one twenty of the roadway, um, he did admit that it wasn't to their standard, he wasn't happy with the way it was. Um, right now, they have a maintenance schedule to come in and do some repair work. They're trying to wait for a good couple of weeks of consistent seventy-degree weather. Um, they feel like that might've had a little bit to do with it, the weather wasn't quite right at the right time. Um, so there are a few things they are trying to address and follow up with us on. If anything in the council has anybody, I would suggest, uh, letting us know, staff, because they're very responsive and can get back to us. And so with Caltrans, that was about, it was a, it was a really good meeting, we, we were able to get some more contacts, um, and get a little bit more information. Also, I want to share with you that, uh, this week we had love Escalon, it was a wonderful, it turned out great. We got a lot of stuff done just for the city, they painted the, the picnic tables at Hogan Forest, the, redid the purple ones. Um, they did the recur, red curbing, uh, replanted some flowers in every tree well going down Main Street, picked up garbage going down one twenty from Brennan to, um, McHenry. So extremely helpful, and I just wanted to say thank you to all the volunteers out there for that, it was, it was, it was amazing to have them out there. Um, that's all I have for now for poke works.
Justin, did Caltrans indicate, um, any ideas about coming to a council meeting?
You know, we did share, and it didn't sound like he was against that, but it wasn't something we had planned at the time. I think it's something we could reach out to them, and then maybe it just seemed like it was a better setting, kind of setting we had around the table and kind of talking about that, if, if we still feel like it's needed, we could reach out to them. But I feel like we've got a really good relationship with them now, and he's following up on the things he said too, I don't know if it's necessarily needed, but he wasn't against it.
What, so what's their plan for one twenty?
So they're going to be re, doing a re-grind, he wasn't sure he was going to let us back know he's going to talk to the maintenance, so he doesn't know as far as adept if they're going to do a complete remove, if they're just going to be doing some patchwork in the area, and then redoing the road work, if they're going to do a grind and overlay. He is going to let us know, but he did say that the condition that it was in and in the areas, that it wasn't acceptable, and they would be getting those taken care of.
I think the last thing any of us want is for them to just do patchwork.
Sure.
On what is definitely perceived throughout town as a poor job.
And they, and he did indicate, it was my, my assumption and understanding from him, if it was going to be a certain type of patch, that that would be a temporary thing until everything was able to be redone.
Okay. You know what I mean?
Cause it, we don't. But a hundred percent, well, I don't want, and I'm not sure where you're going with this, but the patchwork, I don't want different looking pieces of asphalt everywhere, especially when they redid it. And then whatever they do do that works, that's what I want throughout the whole of one twenty, not just in a patch.
Correct.
That's kind of where we're wanting to go with it.
We're also going to update the striping with that as well.
Yeah, they will.
It's really bad right in front of Rite Aid at the, at the turn.
Well, well luckily, the gentleman, the deputy director we met with, I'm not sure, I want to say maybe Turlock he lived or somewhere, anyway, he drives through Escalon.
North, North Modesto.
North Modesto.
North Modesto, so he's not uncommon to coming down McHenry and crossing one twenty or going down one twenty to.
So he's, at least he's reminded about it every day.
He sees it.
Okay.
All you have, Justin?
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Okay, informational updates. I did reach out to CCH to confirm the, uh, meeting dates for the senior housing of May fifteenth, and I have not heard back. Um, I'm not sure if, what the reasoning is, I, I just have not been able to get a response back, and so I'll continue reaching out to them. Um, but we may need to, to move back the, the date to a later date now, um, and so I'll probably end up providing additional dates and coming back at the next meeting with additional, a new date, um, seeing if that works for everyone, um, including our seniors and our fun bunch. Um, cell phones for city council, at the last meeting, it was asked about, uh, how much it would cost for the, uh, call forwarding, um, to voicemail. Um, if the, if the numbers are forwarded straight to a cellphone, there's no charge for call forwarding. Um, if the number goes to a voicemail box, uh, on the city phone system, there is a per user charge, just like a normal user, which would be seventeen dollars per month. Uh, the differentiation being that if you want to call out and have the city's phone number appear or use the app, you would have to have a, a licensed user on the system, um, so it would be seventeen dollars. Um, at the last meeting, we also talked about, uh, the uses of apps, and I'm repeating this because our city attorney is here as well. Our IT consultant did indicate that in the use of an app, in, in, an app to be downloaded on your phone to make outgoing and incoming calls, um, we would be able to retrieve that information if requested and, and have availability to that information because it would be our, our own app, um, through IT. So they would be able to download all the information needed if, if ever requested.
So are we able to get that number forwarded to a cellphone, or do we have to vote on that? Is that something that we have to decide that's an okay thing to do?
I'm just looking for a consensus from council on what direction they'd like, um, staff to move forward with. Um, originally, when this item was, was brought, uh, to the council, it was whether or not, uh, to issue is city cell, cell phones to council members or not, and then whether or not the city should be paying for them or not. Um, and so I know it's kind of, um, progressed since then, because we've talked about applications and we've talked about other ways of doing that. Um, I just need a consensus from council on what direction they want us to move forward, whatever direction that may be.
Please.
Um, is, so the forward, the forwarding to the cellphone is free, right?
Yes. Forwarding, forwarding numbers to personal cell phones is free.
Okay. You have no problem with forwarding phones?
Yeah.
I agree.
Now, if you wanted, um, somebody to have the ability to be able to call back and have the city phone number show up as opposed to their personal phone number, that's where the seventeen dollars a month would come in.
I kind of have a follow-up question from our last meeting. Uh, we were talking about how, um, Mr. Alves had a phone that had the first alert system, is that what it's called?
Right.
That there are other, what's that called?
FirstNet.
FirstNet, and then there are other staff members that have the first net phones, correct?
Correct.
And so what, I'm, I'm trying to understand how this works, so if the cell, cell power goes down, you are able to still communicate between staff members, is that correct?
That is my understanding, yes, it's a first responders, um, phone system. Um, and so originally, it was just the police department, uh, my understanding that had that, um, system, first, first net, that provider, which is through AT&amp;T, it's just a different name through AT&amp;T.
Okay.
Um, and then in twenty twenty, um, the city upgraded, um, and went to first net for all phones. And so we disconnected other services, put Public Works and all the other phones, um, through first net. So now all of the city's cell phones are registered through first net, which is a first responders, um, for cellphone.
Okay, and so, so when the rest of the cells go down, those are still functioning, is it?
That's my understanding, um.
Okay. And so now it's Public Works?
It's supposed to be improved, yes, I don't, I don't know if it's a hundred percent guarantee, because I see a lot of things changing with technology lately.
May, may I add?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, there's recent storms we had, uh, when I was in Monterey, first net will provide a large equipment generator type that will keep first net going when everything else is down, it'll keep functioning. And they did that in Monterey when everything crashed, they actually brought this big old, I don't know, ten by twelve piece of equipment, and, and it just ran and kept all the phones, first net phones running, so.
So, so for this to work, if we had an outage in this town, that trailer needs to be somewhere in the proximity of our town.
So.
We have to have enough of those trailers to affect all of the affected areas.
Yeah, so AT&amp;T, all you have to.
How many trailers they have in emergency, if the whole valley's out, something catastrophic? What's their supply of trailers that we're actively going to think are going to be able to have service?
I, I don't have that answer, but they have plenty of trailers, because I spoke with the, the regional manager, and they have enough equipment to service a, a total disaster, they have enough trailers to bring them out.
They'd be able to do all of California.
Yeah.
Okay, just curious, because you say they have to bring equipment out, that's a delay in service, there's no phones.
We, they have some of the equipment actually, I believe, stored here at the AT&amp;T side, on Coley Avenue.
Okay.
And so those who are connected now, if there was an outage and some sort of emergency, and we needed emergency response as a government board, or as the government here, um, we would be able to have Public Works communicating with police, communicating with staff, is that how that works? And then you could organize whatever emergency response we would need for that. But at the moment, we aren't able, we would just have to somehow communicate like by person, we would have to find a person to be able to be in on that emergency response, is that kind of how I'm, like, we wouldn't be able to contact? Like, if that's who would be, um, in that response.
Yeah, currently, it's, it's, it's city staff, Public Works, administration, and police department.
Okay.
Um, we don't currently have any council members on that. Um, there's no problem in doing so, however, in the event, like, currently, if there was a, a huge disaster, um, you know, and we needed to get ahold of everybody, we would be showing up at your houses. I've done that before at previous employments.
Okay.
The thing is, there's not a permission ask of anybody on council, they all have their plans based on disaster, what needs to happen. There's no need for direction from us, other than we need to know about it.
It's updating you, yeah.
They have a plan in any disaster and what needs to happen, and it's not driven by us giving an okay button to anybody. It happens in the emergency without our permission, it just happens because it's an emergency, correct?
Correct.
Good, okay. The question is, are we paying for voicemail box? Are we doing forwarding phones? I have no problem forwarding phones, but honestly, if you're worried about the number, I think the city should not be paying for it myself, that's my opinion.
I would be for, starting with the forward, uh, forwarding to cellphone and see how it works first, and then kind of go from there. You know, if it was creating an issue or not.
I'm definitely for forwarding the phones, I think if there was an individual need for, uh, the app service required that additional fee, that that would, that would be okay. I think the majority of us at this point would decline that, but if somebody were to want it, I think it's okay to leave it as an option. And as far as the first net phone, um, my thought on that would be that, uh, the sitting mayor should have access to that phone.
I tend to agree with, um, with him as well, so that, that when, in, in a case of emergency, uh, the mayor should, or at least the mayor, should have access to that kind of disaster response, um, if you're going to have at least one council member, uh, with that ability.
Do you feel good with that, like, as a consensus, with Jer, with Jeremy said? I, I feel fine with that personally, but.
Looking forward to having three phones in my pocket.
It would be for emergencies, you know.
Still have to have it on you at all times if there's an emergency, so, thanks.
So, so the direction.
We'll pass that, we'll pass the magic, uh, mayor button, phone over as it goes, it'll be its own separate number. It'll be the mayor's phone, and it'll just get moved, as it goes, it doesn't need to be specific.
May I make a?
Not a request.
I don't want to lose the number, so it'd just be the mayor's number.
Okay.
May I, may I make a request? Um, in the, for the cellphone, for the sitting mayor, um, similar to what happens when, um, another official is on a family vacation out of the area, et cetera, et cetera. So if the sitting mayor knew that he was going to be on a family vacation, on a cruise somewhere, then obviously I would expect that then that would be handed down to the mayor pro tem position.
I'd go to you on vacation.
That's, that's what I would recommend, kind of, just so there's a continuity of, uh, being able to, somebody to act on behalf of the mayor.
All right, can we lay this one?
Agree with that, so I will keep back to you. Um, so call forwarding, um, if interested, go to your phones to voicemail, as well as application, uh, you know, if you want the app service on your phone, that would be okay as well, um, it, optional, not required. Um, and that the mayor would be issued a phone, um, to, to be passed on to future mayors, so rotated every two years. Um, and to be shared with a mayor pro tem or another council member in the event everybody's on vacation or out of the area. Does that sound right?
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good, everybody's good?
There we go.
Okay?
Yeah.
So.
All right. Okay.
So can I ask, how long does, does it take to get your forward, can we just come in and get them forwarded? Uh, our numbers forwarded, uh, as soon as possible, like, that just takes some moment?
I think that's something we could put a request in to be done.
Okay.
Um, if not tomorrow, Wednesday.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's something that's relatively, for that portion, and then, um, and then I'll, I'll inquire about how long the app, um, service would take as well. So. And get that information shared, and then you would download it on your app, on your phone. Okay. Item, I have our agenda item requests, um, we received two agenda item requests, um, in this last two weeks. Um, the first one, uh, came from, uh, resident Kurt Danzinger. Um, they wanted to, the, the description of the item was to request staff to provide at council meetings quarterly progress reports from Blackwater on the wastewater treatment plant upgrades and project costs to date. Report should include all upgrade progress with food processors on their onsite waste stream treatment systems in order to meet the city's pre-treatment permit requirements as called out in the past advanced water engineering recommendation to council from November fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. Um, staff is putting information together, um, to report out on this item. Um, our process for agenda item requests is to currently bring, bring them all to the council and for council to make a determination on whether or not they want them added to the agenda. Um, we do have a meeting scheduled with Mr. Danzinger to go over this items later on in the week. Um, and so at staff, or at council's direction, we can, um, make that determination from council whether or not you want this item added to the next agenda, um, or if you would want me to report back at the next meeting on that item and, and make that determination at that meeting.
I'm going to.
But we will be working, uh, meeting with them later this week to go over this item.
Didn't we talk about that at the last meeting, related to the surface water?
This is the wastewater treatment plant.
But, okay, but in, in my mind, they're, they're two very, they're the two infrastructure projects that everybody knows about.
And so, I mean, I, I think that they kind of go hand in hand because they are the two infrastructure projects.
So I, I guess, if I didn't make it clear at the last meeting, then I was intending that we would receive quarterly updates on both of those projects, along with kind of the schedule status and when to anticipate, all the, the project deliverables, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Sure, so that one was for Ardua, it sounded like that was specific to the, to a billing that you, that we had in the demands. I'm, I'm putting that together for council, um, and was planning on following up with that information in an email.
Okay.
Uh, but I didn't relate to wastewater treatment plant because they were two separate projects, yeah. So his is specific to wastewater treatment plant, uh, council will be getting an update on that item. Um, we had the presentation, uh, which, which gave us synopsis of where, where we were at maybe three meetings ago or so, um, and so I'll include that information as well in that feedback to council on surface water. Um, this one is specific to the industries in the wastewater treatment plant. So, um, as I mentioned, we'll be meeting with him on Thursday to kind of go over this information and, and figure out exactly what, um, is needed. And at this time, I just need to know from council whether you would want this added to the next agenda, or if you want me to provide follow-up from that meeting that we have, and then make the determination to add it to an agenda at that next meeting.
Just one second, Kurt. Um, I, my thought is that we wait until your meeting to determine what is truly being asked and the level of detail that's being asked, because I don't want this to turn into a six-hour project every quarter, it needs to be at high level, uh, in some form. And I think we need to know kind of what our vendor currently can provide with the reports they're already given us, what we can do to change that possibly to meet the request.
Okay.
That they can do for us within their contract already with us, so that we don't have to spend any money on this, and they can provide it for us in certain levels, obviously, we have to provide our own input. But I don't want this to turn into a large project every quarter on both projects, it needs to be at a higher level. If we're within targets and we're within budget and, and stay within that and give updates, that would be enough. But I don't know that until you've had your meeting, so I would like to owe you for that, that's my thoughts.
Okay.
I mean, that sounds fair enough to me, I, I think Kurt had something he might've wanted to add to that.
Sure.
Should we do that now, or?
Just waiting for the rest of the council, if they had any comments, I'm going to bring them up here.
May I make?
No, I would, I would agree with, uh, the mayor.
I definitely want this topic revisited, so I do want to hear what the report is back, um, from that meeting, and then make, yeah, I do want some sort of regular reports back of what the status is, so whatever that ends up in that meeting, um, I do want to follow up with this and, and do want to know where we stand on this project and.
So this item would be reported, uh, from our meeting on Thursday, and any information that staff gathers in response to this item will be reported back to the council at the next meeting. Um, so you can opt to put it on the agenda for discussion at the next meeting, or I can come back at the next meeting with the information that we've put together, and then have you make that determination at that time, whether or not you want it added to the agenda.
If it's, if it's on the agenda, is it something you can remove?
You can continue it.
All right, okay.
Yeah, or table it for a future meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes.
So, I think most of you know, um, I, I do construction and design projects for a living, that's my career. And I can't speak to what Mr. Danzinger, uh, is requesting for the wastewater treatment project, but every design and construction project has, so let me speak specifically to the surface water project. Every project from the start of design to when you're turning on the switch, has a project schedule. Within that, there are certain deliverable cri, there are deliverables that your design partner needs to present. For example, start of design, XXX. Then there are certain milestones through the design process. Those are typically called schematic design, or SD, design development, DD, and CD, or construction documents. So there's fifty percent SD, hundred percent SD, fifty percent DD, hundred percent DD, and so on. And then, once you get to the one hundred percent construction documents, then there's a period of going out to bid. And then, once you go out to bid, then there's a construction timeframe, and then you just build this little schedule that shows, okay, this is. this is when we're anticipating having these design deliverables. This is when we're anticipating going out to bid. This is when we're planning on starting construction. This is when we anticipate being done with construction and the project's operational. Something like that is what I was requesting for the surface water project. That way, we know as a council, okay, is design on schedule, is design not on schedule?
I thought our vendor provided that for the SSGID project with dates and timelines. I thought we'd already seen that.
Believe it was provided in the presentation.
Yeah.
But I don't have a problem adding that into the item as well. And, and that was my intention, was to take the information that was given in the presentation and put it into the email with all that information.
In addition to that, at every single, every single one of those milestones, the engineer has a responsibility to, well, depending on the contract, the engineer has a responsibility to provide an estimate as to is the project within budget. So they provide what's called an engineer's estimate. And so it would be helpful at, at each of those milestones. I mean, if it's not in their budget currently, we can't ask them to do it. Or if it's not in their contract currently, probably can't ask them to do it. But it would be really helpful if we had those engineers' estimates so that we can understand, okay, are we tracking on budget? Are we tracking over budget? Are we tracking under budget? And it just helps inform the council as far as where we're at throughout the, I mean, as we go. Yeah, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I understand that Ardura gave us that presentation. But what would really be helpful is if that information is added into the agenda packet. And it doesn't need to be a six-hour discussion. It just needs to be able to say, okay, here we are. It's, so today's May first. Either Superintendent Collins or City Manager Romo can just say, city council, here's an update on this schedule. We're anticipating receiving our next design packet on June fifteenth. We're tracking that, that seems like we're going down the right path. Okay. Discussion closed. Just so we're able, and it also informs the general public where we're at in the design process as well. So that's the request that I was making for the surface water project. And I think that something similar to that would be helpful for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades as well. Because otherwise, we don't know where we're at, nor does the public. Just my thoughts.
No, I would also appreciate an update, but if this meeting's going to happen this week upcoming, then we can go ahead and discuss that at the next meeting. So what do we want it added to?
Let's, no, well, if we've all talked, I'd like to hear from Mr. Danzinger. He wanted to make a point at the beginning. Say for Mr. Danzinger.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. I think you're misconstruing my agenda request. I was asked by one of the council members to kind of bring them up to speed on what I was talking about and what the city is obligated to do with freight payers' money. So I agreed to that meeting, that has nothing to do with the agenda request. Agenda request says, well, the reason behind it, let me put it this way, is the city takes taxpayers' money. We have, we voted as a two eighteen vote over five years to pay for wastewater treatment and surface water. We're looking for updates. You need to be educated. I know you don't know what you need to know. And you can, I'll use the example with the wastewater, because we had, or the, excuse me, wastewater. Ardura gave you a dog and pony show of things that were agreed on a year and a half ago. You know, the question is, why is it taking so long? Now I, I bring it to the wastewater treatment plant. We got grant money out of the COVID. I forget what it was entitled, but the city, a lot of cities receive money to upgrade our wastewater treatment plant. And we had two viable companies. We had Black, or excuse me, Blackwater, and we had PACE. The city went with Blackwater, fine. X amount of taxpayer dollars paid for this study that had already been done by Blackwater. You don't know that. You don't know that that money was, was from the COVID relief money. There's so much you don't know. So this is a discussion item. We bring it to the council, see if we can get you and the public informed every quarter what, what's going on with our taxpayer money. What progress have they made? That's just a discussion item. Nobody's nailing anybody into anything like that. And so don't confuse the meeting I'm going to have Thursday. That's an informational meeting to, for, and I applaud the council member for asking for it, so we can come up to speed. Maybe you guys audio as well. Thank you.
Please.
Oh, no.
Oh. What's your comment?
I was just going to say, if we're gonna, if it's, that's going to allow, if it's something that's going to educate the community as a whole, then if it's something different than what Mr. Danzinger was requesting initially, then I don't see a problem with that. If it's, you know, what are your thoughts on that?
We keep it at a high level if we're moving forward and we're within budget. And you can say if we expend money, this is what it was for. Short, simple, and sweet.
Go ahead and put it on the item, or then the agenda then?
Sure.
I think so.
Okay, we'll add this on and staff will get that information together. Second agenda item request was received by Larry Grassi. Description of agenda item, update parking regulations on any business that moves into an existing building that matches the same use they currently are. Example, a service or retail business moving into a building that already housed a service retail business prior. He's recommending, or would like council to discuss, updating the parking regulations for any business that moves into that building with that same use. Many buildings around Escalon have been here for decades, and I've been made aware they are not held to the current parking regulations that new buildings are. Similarly, when those buildings that have been around for decades have a business move out and a new one move in, those new business owners are not held to the same parking standards if that business matches the current use as previous businesses, thus allowing further parking issues with lack of parking. Bless you.
I'm just thinking, just trying to think that through.
An item you'd like me to place on the agenda for discussion. So at this point, it would be for discussion, so that council is able to discuss it. And then you would provide direction at that time, how you would want staff to proceed. So this is just to put it on the, on the agenda to discuss it.
I think it's important to reach out to Mr. Grassi and at least ask him to come to council.
Yes, yes.
And explain exactly what the issue is. Now.
Of course.
I, I have had discussions with Mr. Grassi, not on this particular item, but, but on other issues. And he has expressed his frustration to me about parking along First Street and the conflicts with the barber shop parking. And he feels that, I, I can't speak for him, but based on what he has explained to me, he feels like he, he's turning into a part-time police officer because he's now having to try to enforce the parking on the city parking that he was required to put in. But I think it's super important that he comes to council and explains what the motivation behind this item is and try to figure out a solution that works for all.
Yes, so if you guys add this item to the agenda, we would reach out to Mr. Grassi and let him know that the item's been scheduled.
I think it'd be a good idea myself. Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have under updates.
All right. May I ask on an informational update?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just looking for an update on the status of the annexation on the two pieces of lands that were under annexation process. Is there any update on those?
Sure, so they were approved by council to move, to be able to move forward with annexation. We have met with the potential applicant, which is Florsheim Homes. We brought them up to speed with information, reviewed the project with them, and we're just waiting for application. They have not applied at this point in time.
And then the one behind the church, is it the same?
That's the Seren Lutheran Church.
Right.
They have a vacant lot behind them that they own that is currently not annexed in the city. Same thing, council approved for that property. It was currently, it currently had an application in before Sura Moratorium moved, moved forward. And we've talked to them multiple times in the last few months regarding moving forward. I'm not sure that they have a hundred percent of what they're planning to do on that lot yet. And so I could reach back out to them and check, but we, we just met with them maybe six, eight weeks ago to discuss. I think it's still kind of up in the air what they're looking to do on that, on that project or on that property. And when you apply for annexation, you do have to have a site plan or an idea of what you're doing so that they know how to, how to move forward with zoning it. And so I think that's still up in the air for them right now. But I can follow up and see where they're at.
Okay, so both are still stuck with the actual applicants right now?
Yes, they would have to fill out, fill out the applications and submit, which we haven't received anything. But I know that Florsheim is, is working on it because we have been in contact with them.
Okay.
If there's no other questions? Okay, we'll move on to matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda, and except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of an item is within the subject matter of the city's discretionary decision made by the mayor. At that point, we will open it up to the public for anybody who'd like to speak on something.
My, my comments were on the staff communications. We wanted to give them the option to comment. Sitting there kind of concerned when you have emergency responders on this system. And in our case, the manager and the police chief are, serve at the will of the council. The last thing I think we want to do is to interfere with somebody who's trained professionally when they're doing their job according to, you know, all the training they've had, is to have a politician call up and say, don't do it that way. Do it, do it my way, or you're fired. Don't think the politician should be involved in emergency system whatsoever, especially since we're, you're a council with no, yeah, I don't want to say no authority, because you do have the authority over them. But I think their training should take precedence over political action. Thank you.
I have some questions slash issues for Mr. Chief. I'm, I'm a bit disturbed by the radar trailer. I think the intent was good. But as I see it, there is no plate reading, there is no ticketing. It actually doesn't even tell you what the speed is if you exceed what the speed limit is. It just says, slow down. I actually was out there trying to document and see because I continue to see people fly by. I am happy to hear that you are getting some sort of data on your end. That makes me happy. However, there's no consequence. What is really the purpose of putting this type of money into something that thus far in front of my house has not been a deterrent? People don't care, they continue to do it. And I may have misunderstood you when you said you thought it was kids playing, see how fast they could get it to go at one o'clock in the morning? I mean, that seems a little bit to me like it's somebody speeding, and my kids are in bed at one o'clock in the morning, I don't know about anybody else's. More importantly than, and, oh, and also the license plate readers. Is there a reason why there won't be one on First Street in that area from McHenry to El Portal, knowing how much traffic comes through that area? Or is that something that can be considered? More importantly, over the weekend, I made two calls to the non-emergency number. I feel like I've become a self-proclaimed advocate for our residents and especially owning the residence page. The first call, there were disturbing posts that were made by one of our residents. There was an attempt to make three more posts that were not only racial and clearly something was going on, but they also were active threats towards our police department. And I couldn't, in my good conscience, let that go. And so I called your office to notify them what was going on. I also asked that if it was possible that a welfare check could be done because I was very concerned for this individual. I was told that that was not possible. The person who was on the phone, it was only him and the sergeant working. He's catching up on paperwork since last Wednesday, yada, yada, yada. That's a concern for me, that this is a person who clearly is in need of someone checking on them, and it was denied. In addition to that, I made another call, I believe, and I can give you the dates or the times, that same exact day. This was later in the afternoon. There were two children from the neighborhood, middle schoolers, who are problematic that I have frequent run-ins with. They were on their bicycles, shooting at the, I mean, not real guns, but at the time, I didn't know what it was. But they were hitting vehicles up and down Baker and hitting each other, of course. And my son and his friend were there, and they said, oh, mom, that's an Orbi gel blast bladder. I, I don't know what it is, maybe you do. However, after doing research, I can see that these can inflict the same amount of, you know, pain. They're, they can hurt you. I called, I let them know. My, the response that I got, I was, I was dumbfounded. She said, ma'am, you do realize water wars is going on right now? And I said, ma'am, this is not a squirt gun we're talking about. This is something that they are, are shooting at people's vehicles. I don't care what it is. It could have been an airsoft pellet. The bottom line was, she refused to send an officer out, okay? And I said, that's fine, and I go on about my day. Literally, five minutes after this happened, an elderly gentleman was walking right past my house on the other side of the street, and these kids came up from James Street right behind him and shot him with it. And all, and I'm right there. Anyone who knows where I live, you know, I'm always outside in my garden, in my garage. And this old man yelled, sorry, elderly gentleman, yelled, ow, what the F was that? And I saw the whole thing happen. I even had cameras that I would love to send you the footage of. But my, my point is, I was very disturbed to know that water wars was acceptable excuse to not send an officer, and then someone who had nothing to do with this was, was affected by it.
Anybody else?
Thank you. Y'all know me, my name's Danny Fox. I'd like to thank staff at the city council and LAFCO for finally getting the municipal service review up to date after several years. I suggest that everybody, if they've got some reading time, to go to the library or ask for a copy of the municipal services review because some of the items. because some of the items that were mentioned tonight already, annexation, SSGID surface water, wastewater treatment plant. All of it is in the general plan of Escalon, it's an MSR review, originally approved in 2005, is updated in 2019, along with the growth management ordinance, which provides the framework for future growth within the city and its potential sphere of influence. The general plan includes a policy that states the city shall conform to the growth management ordinance. For from August of last year until most recently, you may have heard or read comments such as, "There were those among us in Escalon who want to blow this Escalon out of the population, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand." Manteca, Stockton, Trace. That's not what the MSR says. That's not what the growth management ordinance says. And most recently, I heard and read, if you leave it up to the staff, their solution will be simply build more homes. Just look around, Manteca, Modesto and Stockton. All of these have taken the cities to the brink. But in the pages of the municipal services review, they admit and, and realize that Escalon is known for its small-town charm. Section 2.2, page 19. "It is the city's goal to maintain the slow and steady growth rate into the future to ensure that growth is managed by establishing a growth management ordinance since April 1978. By maintaining, by maintaining a set number of building permits issued each year, assuming an average of 2.89 persons per household, and that's 75 building permits a year, the city will maintain a slow and steady growth rate of less than 1%." Also in the municipal services review, you can hear, talk about the history of the surface water treatment plant, SSGID. Give you a rundown on the minis, in regards to the wastewater treatment plant, how the Escalon Consolidated Fire Department should work hand in hand with the city as they move forward into the future, as well as, as a description with the, of the recreation commission, the com, and the planning commission. A very, very thorough informative document, the plan and the map moving forward. So with that, if they estimate 2.89 per household, 75 building permits per year, that's 225 new residents. Times 100 years is 22,500, a far cry from 83 or 89,000. But I thought, well, wait, if someone built a house and they bought one, they moved in, that may be two people, they'd be having some children. So I took five per household, 75 building permits. That's 375 new people into Escalon. Times 100 years, 37,500. So with that, I think, again, I think anyone that wants to know and see what the plan has been since 1978 and how the mouth, the math calculates out, I would encourage you to go online and take a look at the municipal services review. It was approved by the planning commission, then approved last year in September of '22, moved on to LAFCO, which is the local agency of formation commission. By the way, they regulate how much land you can take. They want to know what you're going to do with it and how you're going to be able to provide the services. And an interesting document in here is, explains the area of interest. That area which the Escalon, the city is interested in as a buffer from outside other cities. Very important document and, and I'd encourage everyone to read it. Don't take my word for it. We're not on a path to blow the population out, 70, 80, 90, 100,000. It's in here and you can do the math. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question of staff real quick?
Real simple, real short.
Is the MSR currently on the website?
Yes.
Short enough.
That works.
We just got a, a comment from someone who wants to know if on YouTube, when people are posting comments, is someone monitoring those to respond to them?
No.
Any else in the public for matters presented from the audience? Anybody online that might want to chime in on a go-to, I believe? All right, hearing done, let's move on to item number six, public hearing. Consider and rule on the appeal filed by McDonald's for a condition of approval imposed pursuant to planning commission approval of a site and architecture plan and conditional use permit, 22-773. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The adding before you is a, to council to consider and rule on an appeal filed by McDonald's for a condition of approval imposed pursuant to planning commission's approval of site and architecture plan and conditional use permit, number 22-773, for the property located on the southeast corner of McHenry Avenue and Countrywood Lane. We do have multiple representatives from McDonald's in the audience and they did put together a presentation that they would like to make to council. This is, go ahead, Deanna. You ready? Okay.
Welcome them to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Dave Romano, I'm here this evening on behalf of McDonald's. I've got four slides, I think.
The clicker is up there.
I'm going to try one real quick and see if I can go forward and back. So it's the left and right? Perfect, all right, thank you so much. The site is at the south.
Mr. Romano, sorry to interrupt you, but there's a statement that we need, we've asked McDonald's to read before presenting this item, just to get that on the record.
Okay. Is that the letter?
Yes, yeah.
Authorizing, okay, I think they thought that just sending that in.
Oh, sorry, it would be nice just for the, for the minutes and the.
Deanna?
I didn't bring a copy.
Just keep your best summaries and I'll tell you if it's good enough.
Deanna Uker with McDonald's USA and I'm fully aware that Mr. Engel and Mr. Strowman were, had the ability to recuse themselves, but we decided that we did not feel they needed to based on the fact they did not vote at the commission hearing and we preferred a full panel for tonight's discussion.
Right, and so you're knowingly stipulating that no grounds of conflict from your perspective?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Deanna. Again, Dave Romano on behalf of McDonald's, it's a pleasure to be before you this evening. I actually represented the landowner on the parcel map that was before the planning commission. I actually represented the subdivision that was developed to the east of this about 20 years ago. I was in the old council chambers, we worked on that project. It's a pleasure to be back to Escalon. I'm joined this evening by Kevin McCauley and Deanna Uker from McDonald's, Hannah from Kimley Horn and Robert Priest, project architects. So we'll do our best to answer any questions. This is a project that is consistent with the city's general plan, it is consistent with the zoning. The city has established a 400-foot-deep commercial corridor along McHenry Avenue. Been very successful in developing that, we've watched it develop. And that's a very nice, it's a very nice long there. So I thought the first thing that would be helpful to do was just to give a very brief site plan progression to get the council familiar with the project and then get into the very specific request. So the original site plan was submitted in October of 2022. It went to the planning commission in December of 2022. And if you look at the site plan that's up there, you'll see where the original access to Countrywood Drive was located and that there was a block wall on the east side of the project. The planning commission deliberated about that and they said they really felt that some additional consideration should be taken into account regarding the access to Countrywood. The neighbors had a lot of comments. And so McDonald's went back with their architect and they, and they presented two new site plans to the planning commission at the next hearing. Those were presented on March 21st. The first site plan moved the driveway a little bit closer to McHenry. If you kind of look at the site plan and you see where it is relative to the house on the north side of Countrywood, and then you can see with the next site plan, it moved it over a little ways. And this was one alternative, but then they came up with a second alternative that actually moved the driveway to line up with the O'Reilly's driveway. And so this was the second planning commission hearing. Again, if you look at the progression, you can see that that driveway on the Countrywood is slowly working its way toward McHenry. And you can also see to accomplish that, the building went from right on the hard corner to more into the site and then we had circulation around the site. So those two planning, those two site plans, alternate site plan one and alternate site plan two, came to the planning commission in March. Those were in response to comments received at the initial planning commission, at that subsequent planning commission meeting and the one where the project was approved. The planning commission again took testimony, they deliberated and they added some additional conditions to the project, which we were able to incorporate. And so from alternate site plan number two, which is the site plan that the planning commission approved, they actually added some additional information. It's a little hard to see on this map, but one thing we were able to do is, is you can see that we were able to wrap the block wall on the east side up north to Countrywood and then take it a little ways further to the west to kind of screen that house. They asked that the pedestrian access off of McHenry Avenue, which was at grade, become more like a table, that it kind of be raised up. So it's kind of like a speed bump or a speed table, but if you're on McHenry Avenue and you're going to walk to the side, it's more of a distinguishing feature. It's automatically slowing down the cars and so they asked for that adjustment that was made. They asked that the driveway in and out of McHenry actually allow both a right turn and a left turn out so that driveway was able to be widened a little bit. And they also asked that the traffic coming out of the drive-through, make a left turn down to the McHenry driveway, again with the, with the desire of kind of reducing the amount of traffic that moves up to Countrywood. So from the first planning commission meeting to the alternatives and that testimony, the continued movement of that driveway to the last planning commission meeting, the addition of the three conditions that you see on the site plan, we've been able to incorporate every one of those. The only condition that is a challenge for McDonald's, we're here to talk to you about tonight and the reason that we filed an appeal was on the hours of operation. And so that's, that's what I want to discuss with you a little bit. And then we have some folks here who are more versed in that than I to answer questions. But I think it's important just to kind of see the work that went on to get to this point. I'll, I'll tell you after sitting through all of those hearings, the planning commission did a great job, your public provided a lot of testimony and the site plan continued to evolve and morph and I think really get better and better each step of the way in addressing the concerns from the neighbors to the east mainly. So the issue with respect to the hours of operation is that McDonald's is a business that serves breakfast and they serve coffee and they serve breakfast. And a 7:00 AM hour for opening for a breakfast business is just a very difficult, a difficult thing. They would like to have extended hours of operation, which they have pretty much at all of their stores. They can give you some additional information, but really opening a store like this at 7:00 AM is just, it just creates a lot of difficulty and is not in keeping with what's typical in the commercial zone. You'll find businesses of all different kinds of hours of operation. And so in looking at how we set, you know, hours of operation and what our responsibilities are, the first is how do we evaluate noise on a project and what are the standards that we apply? And the standards are in your general plan, there are 65 decibels. Over my career, I've worked on a number of projects and have never had a QSR, a quick serve restaurant, a fast food and its order board kind of be an issue of noise. They're typically pretty quiet, but the neighbors were concerned about it. And so while we know that those meet those standards, we went ahead and started to look back and just to make sure we were comfortable with that, we're comfortable that we'll be able to meet that standard. We provided some information to staff on a prior analysis that shows that McDonald's order boards about 32 feet away from the order board operate at about 60 decibels. That's on the site, that's before the noise even reads, reaches the noise wall. And so we're confident that we will fall within that standard. The second thing that the city does is they apply a standard condition of approval and we have that standard condition, it's condition number 48. And it says that the use of the property shall be conducted in such a way that it does not constitute a nuisance to the surrounding neighborhood. So we have an obligation to operate this business in a way that's conducive to the neighborhood. It complies with city standards and codes. And if not, there's a process for there to be a complaint to staff, staff to deal with that and modifications to be made. So as you, as you've seen in your staff report, the question really got down to, the condition came out of the nuisance standards in your code. And you actually have a city code that talks about public nuisance standards and what would be a public nuisance. And the code section actually says a couple of things. The city municipal code, section 8.16.020, says that it shall be unlawful for any person to willfully, willfully or knowingly make, continue or cause to be made any loud and raucous noise. And then the next section of your code, 8.16.030C, defines a public nuisance as loud and raucous yelling, shouting, talking, whistling or singing between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And so it talks in there about talking and I think we ended up with a discussion about, well, talking between 10:00 and 7:00 creates noise and you're close enough to a neighborhood that there's a problem. But this section has a qualifier and the qualifier is loud and raucous. And loud and raucous would be your neighbor having a party at 11:00 in his backyard next to you and he's got a boombox. You call the local police department, you say, "Hey, I've got a problem," or you talk to your neighbor about it. And so those hours of limiting the operation basically fell within those kind of public nuisance provisions. But if that was the standard, everything in the commercial zone would basically have to shut down at 10:00 and only open up at 7:00. So I think it's a little bit of a misreading that section. So based upon that and based upon the fact that the order boards at McDonald's are already under 65 decibels onsite based upon the fact that we actually 50 feet away from these order boards, not only are we going to be below the general plan standard for noise, but we actually have a noise wall as well. And so not only naturally will the noise dissipate, but the noise wall will also help to kind of take that noise and reflect it back. And then we talked about a little bit, you know, coming to the council and was there really anything else that we could do to help soften that? Even though not required to meet the standard. And so if you look on this last site plan and you see it says McDonald's proposed enhanced landscaping. We started talking about what we could do in that little planter, kind of in the area of the order boards. And the, what McDonald's is able to do is further enhance that landscaping to give it a little more height, to give it a little more depth. So if you're in a car and the order boards may be two, two and a half feet high, but the landscaping on the other side of the car, you've got the car buffering the noise. We could get that landscaping a little bit higher so it could attenuate and deaden the noise. And you've got another 30 or 40 feet before it hits the sound wall. Even though naturally we would be below the standards, each and every one of these steps we think would continue to mitigate that concern and to show what a good neighbor McDonald's is. So we've all been to fast food stores, we've all been near them, we know what these order boards are like. They're not extremely loud and McDonald's can tell you that they actually have some ability to, to moderate that. So based upon that and based upon just the importance of being able to open these stores a little bit for extended hours, to be able to service the public, service the public in the morning when they're going to work, service the public a little bit further in the day. Condition number 17 did not exist before the last planning commission meeting. We've been able to comply with every condition of approval that's been offered, but this last one is just difficult for the project to absorb. And so based upon that, we ask that condition number 17 be deleted. I'm joined by the folks I mentioned that are more than happy to answer in detail any questions that they're much more able to answer than me. But that's what we bring before you today, we really considerate, appreciate your time and consideration of this request.
Counsel here, questions, concerns and comments, what do we got?
Just a, just a quick question, what is the requested hours that we're requesting?
Well, the, the condition before, it's allowed to be a 24-hour store. So no condition, 24 hours of operation. My dad operated a very small grocery store in Sheridan, Wyoming for a number of years. And so what I know is this, you don't open a store if you don't have the customers. And so I know in the summers, when the hours got a little bit longer, he'd add an hour. And so I know in the summers, when the hours got a little bit longer, he'd add an hour, he'd maybe add two hours, he'd monitor his traffic, because he's paying two staff members to be there. If you don't have the time, you're paying staff, and you're selling not enough product to stay open, then you kind of ramp those back. And so the initial request, the request before you now, is to just remove that condition, which would allow McDonald's that flexibility. There are representatives from McDonald's here who would really be able to answer that question better, if the council feels like that's a little aggressive of a request.
Thank you.
Mayor, I see the revision prior to this on the screen, please. Alternate site one, yeah. To the alternate site one, please. Uh, no, the one that we were just on, please. I don't have any questions, but I do have some comments. My comment would be that I think that you guys have done a good job at, at listening to the community, and trying to meet their needs. You've gone through multiple revisions. I'm not a huge fan of the second revision. Seems like we, we like to make getting out of fast food restaurants difficult in Escalon, which is kind of what I see with revision, too. But I do, I do give you kudos for taking all the additional steps, and really working with the community, listening to what the folks here in town had to say, and doing your best to address their concerns, so. Got all the comments I have, thank you.
Do you have a question?
So, getting this straight, they want this to be 24 hours? That's what you're asking for?
We like the, the ability to set our hours based on the community's need. A store in, in Escalon likely wouldn't run 24 hours, but, you know, say in the summertime, we'd probably want the store open until midnight, because you have people, it's daylight till almost, what, 9:00, 10:00? They're going to want to grab food when they get home from the lake, or wherever they're at. 5:00 AM is when we definitely want to be open in the morning, because people are going to work, they're leaving to go to the mountains early. I don't foresee it being open 24 hours, we just want the ability to be able to set hours based on the needs of the community. We wouldn't stay open if we didn't have customers coming in, so.
I have a question, if we can go back to the last drawing that was, that we could, was that...
Did I do that, or did you do that? Oh, somebody else is doing it, okay.
The final, the final, the final plan, I guess, would be the one I'm looking at. In looking at that, and I just have the general question, because I know it was discussed, but I don't remember what the result was of the discussion. Was there a request to put something in the middle of Countrywood Lane or something, along those lines? I thought I heard a discussion of putting some sort of a concrete barrier, or something kind of like on California McHenry or something, to direct traffic? There was a discussion of that, is that...
We talked about possibly putting at the X, on, within our property, on the drive aisle, sort of like, we call it like a pork chop, to direct people to go right or left, you know, just to kind of direct. The community doesn't want anyone at McDonald's to drive down Countrywood, even though the community would be the only ones going down Countrywood, typically after...
So that, that idea of that would be on your property, not in the middle of our street?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because I wasn't sure...
And that's what they agreed upon, was that we wanted...
I didn't see anything there, so...
Yeah, they just, that's why they did that, which we, I don't know if your engineering 100% will love it, but we'll do whatever they ask. Seems like it's going to be a hard right turn, because people are going to turn anyway.
Yeah, people living in that neighborhood are going to have a hard turn right, with that in mind, in my mind. Okay. It's the only question I've got at the current moment.
Would you like me to sit down?
Depends on whether we got any questions here.
Less of a question, just an observation, because I know that the concern is the traffic that'll be created on Countrywood and in that neighborhood. And just an observation, that this probably wouldn't be as much as a issue if this, if the decision by McDonald's had been to do, you know, to look into other locations, like the location that's current, the commercial property currently for sale on Lillian, over by Burger King and Starbucks, and whatnot, like where there's less of that community, like going through the community to get to McDonald's at 24 hours, or 5:00 AM, whatever. So that's just an observation, like if it had been put over with the other fast food restaurants and whatnot, and that property had been utilized, this just wouldn't be as much of an issue. And it's just something that I wanted to bring up, because that one's located on Highway 120, that one's going to be probably a good location for both Escalon and McDonald's. So it's just an observation of the other properties that are available in town, and this one just is very close to newer, you know, our residentials, so.
Yeah, our, and our real estate manager did investigate multiple sites, and this was the only one that fit within our plan, and was viable location for our site design and layout, and, and what we were projecting for the long term for the store. So appreciate that.
And make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Has any consideration been given for a public access via sidewalk along, off of Countrywood?
I mean, there, it wasn't, I don't know that we discussed it, I mean, we have the access on McHenry right there. Usually it's, they want, it would need to be the closest entry to the store, and to create a, a walkway coming across the parking lot, across the driveway, I don't know that...
That wouldn't be safe.
Right, mhm. So we added the, the crosswalk that we already had on McHenry Avenue, and Dave spoke about that briefly. The concern was, you know, customers or kids walking there along McHenry from school, how was it, would it be safe for them to get onto the property? And so we raised that crosswalk to be somewhat, it's almost like a speed bump, you've probably seen them in some locations, so people will naturally stop, and the kids would be taller. People in general, not just kids, but...
And what, what are the current hours of your stores in the surrounding areas?
It varies, like Ripon, I believe, is open, the store itself is open 24 hours, but the dining room closes, I believe, at 11:00. And, let's see, most of them, the dining rooms close between 10:00 and 11:00, depending on the customer base, and the drive-through will stay open between 11:00 and 12:00. They all open at 5:00 in the morning, unless there are a 24-hour store. Usually the 24-hour stores are ones that are on a main highway, such as Ripon, Salida, let's see, I think Mantica, probably 120 is probably a 24-hour store, but, yeah, I just don't see this one. It wouldn't be feasible to have it open that, that long.
Yeah, I have a question. When, when is your, what's your delivery schedule, as far as the big trucks that come in?
The, the delivery trucks usually come in the morning. Are you asking how many times a week? Or are you...
Well, the time, I mean, generally, generally speaking, people aren't waking up at 4:00 around here that I'm aware of.
Right.
Unless you're farming, I guess.
It varies by site, they generally like to come early in the morning. I believe usually between 4:00 and 5:00 in the morning, could be 6:00. If there's special requests, we can, the owners can actually put a request in with Martin Brower to have a specific time. So it, it really varies on the trucking company, it comes from Stockton, so it's not, it's not...
So that's pretty flexible, then?
Mhm.
I have just another comment, and, and that is similar to what Councilman Engels stated. I, I really appreciate everything that, that you, Deanna, and your design team listened to the community over two planning commission meetings, two long planning commission meetings. But I feel like this, you know, this is, I feel that this is an important project to Escalon. And, and you took the time to listen, and every single comment that was made, it didn't matter what it was, either at the December planning commission meeting, or at this last planning commission meeting, you took it to heart, and you kept coming back with revisions. And so just wanted to say thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you for taking the time to work with us, we appreciate it, your staff's been great.
Say that again.
Your staff's been great.
Well, if we're good for now, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing to the public, it's 7:20 PM, so we're going to open that up, so anybody in the audience may go up to the podium and ask further questions or add comments as, as they like, so. The podium is currently open.
Hi, I'm Leah Trulow, Jennifer Drive. Is there a kids' play structure in the McDonald's?
The most important question.
Yeah. That makes me sad, because Riverbank's the closest one, there's not much to do in this town for kids, especially when it rains. But I am personally excited that they're coming in, with Orlando's being open 24/7. We also had the sweet spot, so we, our summer hours were till 11:00, because there wasn't really anything else going on in town, so we wanted to have a frozen yogurt shop here. And I looked at Starbucks, and they're at 4:30 when they're open, so I am, I'm one that, I am excited, but I'm a bit disappointed in the play structure, so. I'm about to have that, but thank you.
Evening, Sherry. I'm off the bone, but there's no play structure. I am short enough, no. I have grandkids, they like play structures, but I'm really, really thrilled that McDonald's is coming to here. Now personally, I don't eat McDonald's, but I'll buy your tea and your coffee. But I have grandkids that like McDonald's, so, and honestly, when I'm leaving town, there's really, a couple of years ago, there was no place to buy coffee at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the morning, so I don't think it's an unreasonable request, and you've got commuters that travel through here, and, oh, excuse me, I'm so sorry. The good for Escalon, and those traveling through, it's positive. I, I don't see, and the setback, I mean, they've done, there's this huge gap, Orlando's, they're right in the backyard of some of our residents. Taco Bell and all of this over here, there's backyard residents. I mean, this is, I, I don't see how this is, excuse me, it is different, it's better, it's farther away. They've gone through extra precautions to do noise abatement, and late at night in the summer, yeah, I'd like an iced tea. So anyway, I think it's a positive thing, please consider, they've bent over backwards to work with the city, you know, so let's show them some Escalon love, and maybe approve this thing, okay? Thank you.
Kurt Danziger, mayor and counsel. Just some procedural observations, I've, I've looked at all of these planning commission meetings, and, and the last one again today for four hours and a half. At four hours and two minutes and 45 seconds into that meeting, the city contract attorney admitted to the commission, they'd made a mistake on how they could approve this application. This application, appeal, may not have even come to you if the commission hadn't given the right instructions. But because of erroneous instructions, we're never going to know. Not only did the city attorney make the wrong move there and not correct it before they voted, city manager didn't correct it. So I don't know which way you'll go on the appeal, but I think that the money for the appeal should be returned to McDonald's, because you may not have been here if they had had an opportunity to vote two to one. Secondly, and it was brought up by McDonald's people, is if you grant their request, again, standard conditions on every application, number 48 is use of property. Use of property shall be conducted in such a way that it does not constitute a nuisance in the surrounding neighborhood. If the city planner, planning commission, city council finds at any time that the use of the property constitutes a nuisance, or is otherwise detrimental to the neighborhood or to the community, such use shall be discontinued or modified as may be required. Not written in stone, whatever the hours are going to be, you always have the authority to come back and change them to whatever you'd like. So, one, you shouldn't maybe have even been here for this, and two, you can change it no matter what you do. So just thought you'd like to know.
Gabriela Vargas, I watched also the planning commission meeting, and, excuse my language, but it was a four and a half hour shit show. I was embarrassed for our city, I was, I was dumbfounded by the questions. We had a new commissioner on there who exerted an amount of authority talking over others, others on the commission, but more importantly, regurgitated what he considered his statistical research, which was BS, and solely based on, which he admitted, a documentary produced by Hollywood and put on Netflix that had nothing to do with McDonald's Corporation being involved in this film, which created, obviously, media, outpour, and fear mongering amongst communities. So to state that that is statistical research is absurd. I, however, do work day to day with actual evidence, and I've come today with the evidence from the research that I have conducted myself. I went out to the property at the location based on the scaled design with a calibrated measuring wheel, the speaker, the second speaker, not the first one, to the wall that is currently there, I don't know direction, but, which, it's an eight-foot wall, okay, is about 201 or 2, 202 feet, okay? So we're talking about 200 feet away from this furthest speaker with one eight-foot wall, which wasn't even their property line, that was this side of their property line. And if I'm correct, you will also be adding a six-foot wall behind your facility before the next parcel. So 200 feet, two concrete walls. The distance to the adjacent house on Countrywood, to the front of their house, was the same, 200 feet. If I am correct, that you said it's 64 decibels at one foot away from the speaker, normal conversation is 60 decibels, except for me, because I'm Portuguese and I talk loud, okay? At 200 feet away from this speaker, not including the two cement walls, you are at 38.02 decibels. I also decided to get myself out of bed at 6:00 in the morning, and go stand right where the speaker will be, just to do my own decibel measurement. At 6:30 AM, the range was 84.2 to 92.6, and I've screenshotted all of this and my location, so I have proof to back this up. At 3:30 PM, the range was 84 point, or excuse me, 88.4 to 97.6 decibels. At 6:30 PM, it was 85.8 to 99.3 decibels. At 11:30 PM, it was 74.1 to 79.7 decibels. All of which without a McDonald's standing right there, just normal traffic. I also went a little bit further, and as I gave you the measurements from the closest homes to these speakers, I went to several other locations that have speakers. Starbucks, to the closest residence, is 220 feet. Burger King was a little bit more, at about 230. Hula's was 129, and Taco Bell was 122. Much closer to that adjacent residence than what McDonald's is anticipating. In addition, the conversation about the lights on people's houses, which based on their drawing, you can see is asinine. If you go out of the Taco Bell Plaza parking lot, to the rear of it, your lights will shine directly into the homes of 1090, 1094, and 1098 San Miguel. No issue there, though, do we? This also does not include the speakers that come from Rite Aid, and PNC Bank, and any other banks that have the, the deposit tellers with adjacent neighborhoods. Also... Also, 4:30 AM, Starbucks is open, everybody loves that. We are losing money as a city to not allow them maximum benefit of capitalizing on their McGriddle. Who doesn't love that? I can't eat it, I have celiac, I'm sorry. But my kids love their food and we're only punishing ourselves. Lastly, I want to say that according to our city ordinance, 5.36.120, a moving food truck is allowed to be at 80 decibels at at least 10 feet from the source, okay? However, it must cease when it is stopped. At the taco truck at Orlando's, I went and measured at 10 feet from the source at 10, or sorry, not 10 o'clock, about 8 o'clock at night, right before they were gonna shut down, and they were at 100 decibels. And that, I didn't measure the house, how close it is, but I think everybody knows it's literally across the street. So I think that the, the reason for us being here is ridiculous. We need this in our town, whether I choose to eat it or not, who cares? The complaints and the distractions, and they, they have gone above and beyond for this city. And they are giving us something we need. And to vote against this or modify or restrict this, I think is gonna lead to backlash from the community and other projects that want to come into town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else out there would like to come to the podium and speak?
Well, Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp and Council members, how are we today? Most of these folks here behind me have already done a lot of the hard talk and so I'll just leave out a bunch of the garbage I have that corroborated some of that. But at the planning commission meeting on March 21st, Commissioner Dunbar proposed a condition of approval 17, limiting the business hours to the applicant to 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And again, he cited the noise ordinance. I find that to be unacceptable. So I don't think that noise ordinance is there to limit an otherwise legitimate business from conducting business. So I get that he's new, I get that, but he needed to probably not do any of that stuff. I, I don't agree with it. I think that the big thing that I wanted to talk about was we could put a doctor's office there and insurance salesman or something like that that doesn't have a bunch of nighttime traffic. That sounds really cool to the citizens of Escalon, but those places don't give sales tax revenue to the city. McDonald's will give you, you know, the property tax revenue and you're gonna get the sales tax revenue. And I think that limiting the business hours of a place like this, we need to be taking advantage of all this crappy commute traffic from Modesto that burns through here. Let's start taking their money because we're poor, right? We have an Escalon Police Officers Association that still doesn't have a contract after 10 months. We got a city manager who's asking for a 4% raise. We gotta pay for that. We need the property tax revenue, we need the sales tax revenue, we need all the revenue we can get. And I think that this McDonald's, these McDonald's folks here have bent over backwards trying to appease this planning commission, all to be held up from the breakfast revenue that they're gonna receive, that we need to get that revenue, the sales tax revenue from that as well. So I don't think we should be limiting their business hours. I think you guys should approve their appeal and get rid of, condition number 17 and let them start doing business, start making some money.
Thank you. Anybody else out there that would like to speak tonight? Go in once, anybody online?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't typically come and speak, but I felt compelled since McDonald's has been so controversial in Escalon. I feel that limiting the hours of operation will limit sales tax dollars generated, which would benefit Escalon by increased funding for public safety and parks, which is why we live here. It's a nice, quiet community that's safe and we want it to stay that way. McDonald's will generate not only sales tax revenue, but jobs for local residents, especially local teens that now drive to neighboring cities to work. I feel we should keep our tax dollars and our jobs local whenever possible. I believe the concern of increased traffic would occur mainly on McKinry, which traffic is already there, people would come through. They won't drive down Countrywood unless they live there. So I don't feel that there's a reason to be concerned with traffic in that area. McDonald's wants to conduct business in Escalon and they have been gracious to make several modifications to adhere to planning requirements. And I don't think that we should drive businesses out of town and limit their hours to generate revenue for Escalon. I think we need to give McDonald's a chance to be part of the Escalon community. Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience? All right, if we don't have anybody else from the audience to speak, then we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing.
Before you do that, just ask one more time on the go-to and give a little time.
Okay, one more time for the folks out on the go-to meeting, last chance. Was there anybody that'd like to speak on this topic?
Go ahead.
Hearing none, then we will officially close this. My watch says 7:37, we'll close this public hearing and bring this back to council. Thoughts, concerns, comments before we move this?
Well, I would say that the citizens have spoken as to what they're, they're wanting. So I would make a motion, if anyone else doesn't feel compelled to do something different, to reverse the decision and, you know, allow them to come into our town.
Second, and, and just to clarify, so we have a clear record, you mean to approve the project without condition 17 or 48? Removing condition 17?
Correct.
Okay.
But with the mindset that if it does become a nuisance, we can adjust that.
Right, per the standard condition that we have.
Correct.
Before we move forward with the motion, may I ask a question?
Yes.
I wanted to know how the rest of the council felt about the concern that was brought up by Mr. Danziger that McDonald's was required to submit a payment for an appeal based off of this. And the reality is, the reason this appeal went through is because of an error made by city staff. And so personally, I, I agree with Mr. Danziger that I don't, if, if this appeal moves forward, I feel that that $690 should be refunded back to McDonald's because McDonald's paid for the appeal. When in reality, they shouldn't have had to be here in the first place. So.
Did you have, you had, look like you had something to say, you're good? Okay, because it's a separate issue, do we need to separate that consideration being that this is not part of the, part of the appeal?
I, I think if, if that's something, I would just say this. The, the person that was, that was sitting for the planning commission from my office that night acknowledged the fact that she kind of wasn't clear on that and corrected herself. I told her after the hearing, I'm glad you at least got it on the record. From what I understand happens, and I wasn't there, she, she communicated to commissioners as soon as she realized she may have made a mistake. And she asked, and one of the commissioners says it wouldn't have changed his or her mind anyways. Now, I'm not sure if that's, would have been true for the others. So I just think it's a question as to whether it would have changed the outcome. But I would only, I would only, I would only provide that direction in the form of a motion. So it would have to be an amended motion or Councilmember Hagan or Mayor Pro Temp Hagan or Councilmember Ingle would have to revise their motion to incorporate that in. Otherwise, if there's no motion on the floor for that, it's not part of the motion.
So I guess that would be the question. Councilman Strum, so you're asking for an amendment to the motion on the floor, is that correct?
Actually, I was asking for a discussion before the vote happened because we have a motion and we have a second and then there's a period of discussion. So I wanted to ask the discussion before we took a vote.
Discussion, the motion and the second, down to your thoughts on that?
I'm sorry, McDonald's, I'd like to keep the 690.
We'll get it back to you with buying some milkshakes and nugs, it sounds like.
Well, just keep the motion as it stands then.
All right, so we have a motion.
I just want to say that I am, you know, I'm excited for another business to come into our town. And it is my concern that there will be the traffic issue in Countrywood. I just wanted to put that plain out there. That's my personal concern is somebody that, you know, is in the community in the parks and Countrywood and Sophie and all of that. So I just wanted to put that out there, that I do welcome McDonald's and.
Yeah, I would like to welcome it all as well. I can say that I do not believe there's any restriction on any business hours of any business in this town. I'm not interested in setting that precedent. If there's, if there's an issue at a later date with concerns from the community, then we can address it then. But I don't believe we should be restricting businesses as they come into town. McDonald's has diligently worked on every concern they possibly could to mitigate the noise, move the building, move the entrances and did everything for us. So I greatly appreciate all of that as well. So I wanted to put that on the record. With that, there's no more discussion, we have a motion and a second. So all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1. All right, let me get back to my agenda here. All right, next up administrative matters, number seven, I believe that is, City Attorney.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. The item before you is to, as indicated, it's a First Amendment to the employment agreement with your city manager. Dominique was appointed city manager last year, effective April 1, 2022, with initial base salary of $140,000. And July, honor about July of 2022. I'm not sure if it was adopted then or adopted a little bit after, but the salary schedule that was in effect as of July 1, 2022, salary schedule for various unrepresented employees, including the city manager, it allowed her to go up automatically to 146,888. Her contract at the time was directly tied to any salary schedules. And, and according to that salary schedule as of July 1, 2023 of this year, so about two months from now to the day, she would be entitled to another salary increase per that salary schedule to 154,232. As you know, I've only been the city attorney here for a few months, but in kind of, in Dominique asking some questions about it, I had some concerns about the process. I feel like this, for your city manager, it's best to get compensation increases through an open meeting that requires council approval. And it shouldn't be tied to a salary schedule that doesn't further the interests of transparency and in my view is not best practice. So I talked to Dominique about it and I can say she had a, was a very completely supportive. She wanted to do what was best. She was made clear she was just going off what she was told was common practice and she was fully supportive of this item. And so that's really what this contract does. It's gonna require any future salary changes to be done by contract amendment that requires council approval, presumably in connection with performance evaluations. That is the normal and, you know, proper way to handle these things. If council does approve this, she would have a 4% salary increase. That would go to 152, 763. That will be in effect until it's otherwise changed. She does have performance evaluation annually around the April, May timeframe like we are right now. But she won't, she will not be getting the salary increase to 154 that she would have otherwise been entitled to in July of this year if she would have not, not be amending her contract today. So essentially what this does is it gets her off of the salary schedule, requires manual adjustments to the contract and council manual approval. And it also promotes transparency. And it also, I mean, it's not a lot, but there is a slight salary savings relative to what she would have otherwise been entitled to in July if, if we weren't doing it this way. So that's pretty much the long and short of it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So the salary schedule will be removed at that point from all records, if you will?
The salary schedule will stay the same, we'll just remove the city manager line item off of that. So it'll be amended, but otherwise will stay the same.
Okay, for positional reasons, do we have a bottom and a top that would be part of that? Or is this just gonna continue as a negotiated item for council if?
It's gonna be.
If Roma was to be, if she took off to another city, did something else and we're looking to hire somebody else, do we have a salary range that is on the books for us? Or is it up to our full discretion to pay whatever we would like?
Council's discretion.
Council's discretion.
It's a negotiated contract with an appointed official, which in my view is the, the best practice.
Just wanna make sure we're not, at this point, we're unsaddled of any.
Correct.
Maximum numbers.
This, this move will unsaddle you completely.
That's what I was hoping for. Any other questions here?
May I make a comment?
Please.
So first of all, I really appreciate the effort that Dominique has made in this position as city manager. And I appreciate the working relationship and all the background information that's provided to us. And there's always a but. And, and the but is, I believe, as council, I don't believe that we are in a position at this time to talk about salary increases purely because of the fact that we have not received our mid-year budget update yet. We don't know where we're at financially as a city. And it's now May 1st and we have just under two months to receive a mid-year budget update, see where we're at, how the books look, have a budget workshop over a series of a meeting or two, and then adopt a 2023, 20, or yeah, 2023, 2024 budget. So all of these factors lead me to, I would like to make a motion to table this discussion until we receive the mid-year budget and we know where we're at financially and review the mid-year budget and make sure that we are fiscally sound because we had a huge business and a huge sales tax revenue generator for the city of Escalon leave two weeks ago. And quite frankly, it's scary. Yes, we, we just voted McDonald's, but buying a cheeseburger or a Big Mac is not the same as getting the sales tax revenue from buying an F-150. So like I said, this is absolutely no reflection of Dominique, both personally and professionally. But I think it's important that we consider tabling this discussion until we receive the mid-year budget and have a chance to review it. until we receive the mid-year budget and have a chance to review it. Those are my thoughts.
I would disagree with that myself. Raises were projected. With numbers in mind, we've given other bargaining units raises without a mid-year budget with the numbers. I don't think this one salary is gonna move the needle one way or another. There was a positive performance evaluation here. I don't see any reason with the agreed-upon changes we've made to re pulling the salary schedule off of the list, or excuse me, pulling the position off that salary schedule and what's been going on. She was very fair in allowing us to do that and wanting us to do that and worked with us. I don't see any reason myself to necessarily postpone that. Those are my feelings.
Yeah, I would I would concur, given what we've discussed in closed session.
That's all the comments here at the council. We need to open this up to the public, so at this point, open up to anybody in the community here if that's still here would like to speak on this topic. The podium is yours.
Also, no offense to our city manager, but where are the, where's the raise for the EPOA? This is ten months. Ten months they've been working without a contract, so I think we need to keep that in mind. If we're having a shortened budget, all this other kind of stuff you guys are talking about, we need to, we need to remember that we have police officers on the street protecting us every day that still don't have a contract with the city. And I think that ten months later, that needs to come first. Needs to come with the passing of a budget or needs to come before we start doling out raises. They've been waiting for ten months for a contract. We need to get that settled. Thank you.
Lawyer Frank, city lawyer, can we make a comment to that or no? Or is that still?
Uh, without knowing what you wanna say, I would just say, you know, generally speaking, labor negotiations are confidential and a lot of that stuff that happens in closed session, so at a high level, you can say the city's looking at it or, you know, we're trying to resolve that, but other than that, I don't wanna get into specifics.
Anybody else in the community would like to come to the podium? All right, well, then we'll close the public side of that and bring it back to council. And is there anything else we'd like to discuss before we make a decision on what the next step would be with this?
Is there a current motion on the table?
There's no motion on the table, I don't believe. Was yours a mo-, I'm sorry, Councilman Struman, was that a motioned table or was that a?
I made a motion, but I think it died.
Restate your motion and we'll go from there. Let's let's get back to that. I don't wanna miss a procedure point here.
So my motion is to table this administrative matter until we receive the mid-year budget update and we can see where we're at from a financial standpoint from the city.
So we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? So that means the motion would die in that regard. Um, is there any other motions on the topic that we'd like to make on this council here?
Sure. All motion to approve the First Amendment of the employment agreement with Dominique Romo for the position of city manager for an annual salary of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-six cents.
So we have a motion on the table? Do we have a second to that?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye abstained.
So motion carries four zero with an abstention? Is that how we say that?
I don't.
Four one with.
Four one with an abstention?
Yeah, four, four zero one.
Four zero one, okay. All right, uh, next would be council communications, future agenda items. Um, start with Councilman Engel tonight.
Uh, sure. Um, one thing I would, for people in the audience and for those that are watching or may watch the video later, I just wanted to thank everybody in the community for showing up and helping out for Love Escalon. So it's fantastic to see the residents that get involved in our community and help to take care of it. There's a lot of stuff that needed to get done, and it looks like there were were several nice accomplishments and things that were achieved. So I just wanted to say thanks to the residents for that, and I will end with that.
Councilman Struman?
Just a couple things. Uh, one is, as a follow-up to discussion that was had at the last meeting during council communications, I brought up about possibly asking the school district for a refund for the payment of three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirteen cents on a payment that was made March tenth, twenty twenty-three. I was asking how how we could pay maintenance on a drained pool. Didn't really make much sense, but I do wanna report out at our meeting on April twentieth that with the school district, that they actually came prepared with invoices and and showed all of the PG&E, the chemical bills, et cetera, et cetera. And then it was broken down to the exact percentage of that the city owns. So I did not ask for a refund because it was up until November tenth, when the pool was drained. So they actually did their homework. In addition to that, I determined, or I went back and looked, and I thought that the that we were paying maintenance from last May, May nineteenth, a total of thirty thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and two cents. But in actuality, they have invoices and makes sense, so thank you to Superintendent Chavez for providing that information, and I I didn't really, couldn't ask for a refund, I'm sorry. And let's see. Just really wanted to follow up and 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 say I appreciate all the efforts that went into Love Escalon and to the the recent farmer's market. I feel like the the community and the chamber and those community members in charge really put forth a really big effort in bringing our community back together. I feel like we've, we lost some of that during the craziness of COVID. And so it's good to be back and seeing us working together as a community. The only other thing that I really wanted to ask staff is, a lot of people are talking about it because they see the open twenty-four hours, but do we have an update on Orlando's?
So the inside of the building is is ninety-nine percent complete. I think they are stuck. It's my understanding they're currently stuck on environmental for the, for either the gas station or it is the gas station. They're just waiting for the approval from Environmental Health. So they have all city approvals, Caltrans approvals for the highway, and their gas station approval is pending from San Joaquin County Environmental Health, which they did contact city staff last week asking questions. And so the questions that they were asking were just kind of double-checking, closing gaps. And so those type of questions would lead us to believe that that they're very close to getting that approval. And once that's in, the gas station would move forward.
And the only other thing that I I'd like to report, I brought this up a few meetings ago, and that is the disaster response as a result of what happened at East Palestine, Ohio. For those of you, I think everybody knows what happened there. The Norfolk Southern train derailed. A town the size of Escalon had to be entirely evacuated. Three months later, there are still folks that are living in a hotel. And the Norfolk Southern main line runs right through the middle of East Palestine, Ohio. I don't know if that sounds familiar to any of you, but it really brought a light bulb and went and made a light bulb go off in my head. So last week, I had a meeting with myself and Dominique and Justin, Chief Flores, Chief Mello from the Fire Department, and Ness from Escalon Ambulance. And I felt like it was a really great conversation about making public safety more visible to the public in a non-response time. So we have a follow-up meeting to kind of talk about some things on May nineteenth and look forward to presenting that at a future council meeting, just to bring you guys up to speed. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilman Walker?
Yeah, just shortly, I'm excited to hear that we have ongoing conversations with Caltrans going on and that there where there will be some safety precautions. The flashing beacons are looking to be installed at Brennan one twenty. That's a step forward in the right direction. You know, do what we can at least. And if I could have looked into doing it on the other side at Campbell and one twenty, I'm not sure if that's feasible or not, but if that can be written into some of these conversations, that would also be great if we can slow traffic coming in towards the trailer park and into that side as well, because they're speeding on through there too. But I appreciate the sitting car, officer's car sometimes. That also seems to help, but if we can get that in the conversation. Besides that, um, yeah, we had a great showing at the farmer's market. It was one of the biggest showings I've ever seen out there. Continue to show up for your community, and then Love Escalon is always great. We got a lot of things accomplished with that. So thank you to the community for coming out for those events, and we look forward to seeing you at the next farmer's market coming up. So that's it for today.
Mayor Protem?
I would just like to kind of piggyback on that and say, you know, again, thank you for coming out to Love Escalon. I think it was a great day and to see a lot of people putting out a big effort to help their fellow citizens was was, you know, brought a smile to my heart, so to speak, so it was nice to to see that. Hopefully, we'll get more and more citizens wanting to play a role like that in the future. Other than that, I don't have much else to say tonight.
Thanks. Uh, I'll try and keep it quick. Justin with our vendor from Caltrans, he's he's been great with us. Keep the dialogue going with him. I think Campbell's a good idea. Maybe slow that side of town with traffic coming in might help our citizens there at Almond Grove. That would be great if we can do that. I know it took a lot to get that blinking light going on at Brennan and one twenty, but they kind of moved that forward without us prodding. That was really heat, with between the camera and everything else, they they saw an need, and they can do that as quickly as Caltrans moves. It's gonna take eighteen months, maybe twenty-four, they said, to get that going, but honestly, for them to get a light onto the schedule, it's even longer right now, unless we found a magic pot of gold of some sort that we could just float that right today kind of thing. So yeah, if we can talk to them about that, check in once in a while on them on when the weather warms up and we get that temperature number they're looking for. Keep looking at that, see what we can do there. That would be great. Other than that, echoing the farmer's market, I was out there. Looking forward to seeing more. I know it's a little early with a lot of the vegetables, so we'll see a little bit more probably this next time as more stuff comes into season and gets picked for us to choose. But it was great seeing everybody out there. With that, we're gonna adjourn the meeting and go into closed session. If there's anything to report after that, we'll come back and report after that. So thank you very much.